Don't have it? Okay. All right. Be glad, it's the finished product. It is the finished product. In an ideal world, I would have come to you folks and said, you know, are there some edit monies that might be available for this type of economic or community development project? But we've been talking about it for a year. Everybody on the group said, this looks like something we should really have, we should, we should use. A to Z closed. You know, we don't have even a facility of that nature now. Now, will it hurt other businesses here? Hotels will have some questions. We'll address those. We're, this is, we're at the end of the study. We're at the end of the beginning right now. Hotels will fill up with some of these kinds of events. We were talking about weddings. I know they will. It will, it can help the local hotels. Some of the other types of events, I don't know that that would take business from them, but it does, it's a, it's another competitive, it's a competitive situation. So, what I'm asking for just tonight, and I was at the commission meeting this morning with the city, or with the county commission, and we're just trying to divide this study three ways between EDC, the county, and the city. It was ninety-five hundred dollar study. That would be three thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars each. The commission has already, like I said, this morning, they committed to that. Main source has told us, this is, you know, if, if, and one of the other entities doesn't want to pick that up, they're, they're third, then we'll do it. We'll do it. Main source does a lot in this community, they really do. Sometimes it's a little behind the scenes, but they do a lot. And I, I think it would be, in my view, I think it's a very good use, an appropriate use for, for edit monies in this situation. That is the gist of this matter. I'd be glad to take any questions that you have.
I thought the commissioner said three thousand one hundred dollars.
We'll, we'll make up the difference. Three thousand one hundred sixty-seven, yeah. Well, that's three ways between ninety-five hundred.
And really, the only thing we're here tonight to decide if we want to help pay for the assessment evaluation. Not even for the floor, because that's a long way to go, to determine how to finance it and what happened.
And mayor, I'm sure you remember that several years ago, there was a smaller study.
Two thousand ten, Torres, Matt, and I forget what the capacity was, there were four or five hundred people, I think. And they did an assessment through our community to see how to utilize what reasons. And I got a couple assurance I'm glad to share with the council for future use. And plus, it's a seventy, seventy-eight page document.
If you got, if you folks hadn't gotten that document, I'll send that out tomorrow. If you would, if you would like to have that. You don't want?
No, I haven't.
Well, you haven't, you haven't seen it, okay. I, I'll make a note, I'll send that out tomorrow.
I guess the comment I make, and I'm just, it's just frustrating to come to us afterwards and ask for money, rather than come to us before we spend the money, or before you spend the money and say, hey, we want to chill on this. And I mean, I, I think before we committed to spending some of that money, I think we need to look at other neighboring communities and talk to them about how they use theirs, how often it gets used. I, I know there's one in Chevyville that does, does not get used a lot. And it, and that's one of the comments that I've heard from some of their officials, that it doesn't get used a lot. It, it's not eight hundred, I know that, it's probably one fifty, two hundred, something like that.
That's the thing, just like from the work of G Comp, and first startup, we had Chris's parts here in town. Then after we got large enough, we had to take a list, we were all went to attend, so we knew what town we had to go to.
Just frustrating to say, hey, let's put this money here, help pay, pay me back.
I feel the same way.
My concern.
Commissioners have the same concern.
Yeah. I, I agree with you, I, I don't disagree with you. Like, and as I said, it, if it were, you know, an ideal situation, we would have been here and said, you know, let's, let's try to divide this up. It was just a matter of people on the committee were saying, you know, we've talked about this for a, a year or more. You know, we're going to do anything, we're not going to do anything, what's the best thing to do? The thought was to have a, like I said, it's a seventy-two page study. Jamie, a deal a lot with the kind of things you're talking about. Would it be, would it be, could it be self-sufficient, could it be even a little bit of a moneymaker? Yes, it could, if it's run properly, if you have the right people or person as the general manager of that.
Just a question. Sure. When, when do we do this study? So, when was it?
Study was completed about two months ago now. No, about a month and a half ago now.
So, I, I mean, so we've known for several months now that it was going to cost us this? I just, that's what I'm saying, I mean, and we're just now getting approached about it.
We went ahead, the EDC did, and we took the whole thing. We did that with the hopes that you guys would want to contribute to that. We took the whole ninety-five hundred. Again, the main source CEO, Mr. Brown, is president of our Economic Development Corporation this year. He wanted to be president, he said, we got it, you know, we really need to get something done, get moving on this. If, if, if one of the entities that you're talking about, Mark, if they can't, if they don't feel like it's something to take, then we'll just take it. We'll take whatever's left.
But Mark would start out, EDC is probably intend on paying for this.
Yeah. We, we have already fronted that money. We put it up, ninety-five hundred dollars. It's been paid for, it's completed, not only completed, but we had a fairly long conversation, our shell building, not a shell building, our event center committee, our event center committee had a long conversation with them afterwards with a number of questions that, that we would ask. And so, we can answer those if, if you, you know, we'll, we'll be back before the, the council to say, this is some ways we want to proceed. What, what's your ideas on that? Glenn, I, I'm sure that you would have said, you know, and, and I have to, I have to use a little bit of intuition, that you would have asked for a study like this. You know, if we were.
You know, I, I, exactly. I would have, and I'm not, I think the edit fund is there to do those kinds of things. I think that's an appropriate, appropriate way to, to look about it. It's just, sit on our shoes for a minute. You've had the thing for two months, you've been, you've had the study ongoing quite for six months, and this is the first you've heard about it. You come and ask us for dollars, which, that's fine. But, and it's on the agenda, but you haven't even sent out the study to us, even, I mean, I. Event center study, okay? Some time ago, I had heard about something, maybe talked about that, but nothing ever came. There was never a follow-up to it, ever. I figured about, I don't know where it's at, nothing. So, and, you know, I don't want to seem like I'm just being stingy or being argumentative about things. And I don't want to give the appearance to the EDC that we're, we don't want to be cooperative, but for crying out loud, I can't imagine those businessmen, if somebody came with the same scenario to them, and sure, I'll give you thirty-one hundred dollars, they would look at me and laugh if I had come in and asked for that after the fact. I mean, I think they would. I can't imagine, I just, I'm beholden by the way it happened.
Well, I can understand that, and, you know, you guys have been really good for us, the Economic Development Corporation, since I've been here. I mean, we, and we've tried to be good fiduciaries too, of the monies that are contributed us, contributed to us by the city and the county and our private sector investors, and we've never come and asked for you for it anymore than what, than what you have contributed. Now, sometimes there are situations that arise, and I don't want to make it seem like it's any kind of emergency. It's not an emergency. It's not an emergency situation. Just a situation where we wanted to make sure that the study was done well, that it was complete. And at that point, you know, we had a possibility, we had a good possibility, and still do, of if the city is in a situation where they don't want, you know, they don't feel it's appropriate to make that contribution with, with the other two entities, then we, we can have that paid for, and it's not going to hurt EDC. And we're going, we'll continue to do what we do. And, and I totally understand that. I, it was my understanding that the study was going to be forwarded to you, which I'm incorrect, and I apologize for that. But I, like I said, I'll get it out tomorrow morning.
It's supposed to forward it?
I, we, we were talking in a community growth group meeting, I mean, it went out to everybody, I thought there was someone who was going to forward that to the council.
If I'd been, you know, I should, that's one meeting, right?
Yeah.
And a little history, council, council, I know that Glenn understands that the money can be spent by the mayor without asking the council. But I respect the council, I want support, I want to spend. And it is debt, and I agree that issue had been resolved before it happened, before the money was spent. And if you feel like it shouldn't be spent, just because the date is late, now, that's one thing. But if Mr. Copeland came to you three months ago and asked for it, would you support me in doing it?
I don't think, I don't know that this is a time sensitive matter, really. I mean, we had an October meeting, and getting put on the spot does nobody good here, doesn't do any business owner any good. Seeing the report is going to be making believe around to somebody, and if, I guess, if all five of us read the report and say, this is a waste of our time, then we would say no on the money. But I don't think you can make a decision without having the report that everybody else has seen, because the commissioners have probably seen the report. We haven't seen the report. They appear, they apparently liked what they saw, so they probably went with the money. But how can we make a decision?
Okay, I agree with you. I think it's a very reasonable request. And as you said, Blake, it's not time sensitive. It's not a time sensitive issue. So, there'll be an October meeting, I suppose, at the regular month. And I will get that, as I said, I promise I will have that sent out in the morning to you folks. I regret that it hadn't gotten to you. That was probably, you know, there's a lot of projects that we're working on right now, and I'll take the blame for that. I, I would have liked to have gotten it to you before this meeting. I, I thought it was going to be there, but I, I am wrong. But I will have that to you in the morning. Like I said, it's, it's substantial, it's long, it's comprehensive. I'm sure you'll want to take a look, you know, careful look at it. If there's questions, please ask away, give me a call. I'm not far, not hard to get in touch with.
What I think you should do then is, you get that out to the council. I'll also use the scanning to get information on the whole report as well, by different companies. So, you can have those facts as well. And so, I'm entertaining a motion to table this until the October.
Some would.
Make that there on the second of late for discussion. And all those favorites say, aye, aye, both same side. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, sure, thank you. Appreciate your comments, and you'll have that tomorrow.
Jamie, would you like to give a report?
Yeah. We approved the use of the City Hall gem on October seventeenth for the TLC to resume for Plug Racer. We authorized street closures for the Fall Festival since the eighteenth to nineteenth of September.
Seventeenth to the thirtieth of October.
Then, we actually made a, a change to the contractor at Strad for the wastewater department. It's actually going to save the city somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, possibly. So, we authorized the change. Change is going to cost us, I think it was thirty-five thousand dollars in engineering costs. However, the overall cost savings will be about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand.
This is for what?
I'm going to say it wrong, so I messed up. VLC, or V L, V L R, some changes to the V L R vertical loop, uh, detractor, tractor reactor.
Jeff up there?
Why don't you speak, because you're going to tell them all about that.
It's modify, modify the vertical loop reactor, so it'll handle more flow. We're going to put the oxidation ditch back online, but what the amount of work it would take to get it back online, it was cheaper to add additional air to the vertical loop reactor, do some modifications there, and just leave the, the old ditch offline. The ditch is now thirty years old, and wastewater business, thirty years is a lifetime.
I'm trying to get equipment up to maximum capacity.
We approved a Narcat policy for the police department for overdosing of opiates. We approved a vehicle purchase for fourteen thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars from acreage for the Dodge Charger. We traded, we approved the purchase of four additional D card cameras. And we were looking to set up interviews possibly next week for about five different candidates. We don't update set just yet, but that's what we're looking at. We tabled the discussion of SOPs for the fire department for another month. And we also just tabled the discussion on replacement of fire gear until next month, waiting on some quotes to come in. We did, we did approve the disposal of some items for the chief, like old hoses, appliances, things like that, that they may trade in actually for some training or actually sell outright. We, we came to an agreement on the sale of some fire gear at a minimum price. And then we also agreed to transfer the title of Old Truck Eighteen to the local AMA because of the new, new rescue truck that we actually got in. So, we'll replace that truck, so we'll get that off our maintenance, insurance, lighting. And then that truck was purchased with a grant, so if we went to sell the truck, it'd actually be a violation of the grant that we were awarded to get the trucks. Rather than do that, we were going to sign the title over to the local AMA. And then, we discussed the basketball goal outside in the parking lot and took no action at that point in time. We're going to get some quotes for putting up either fencing behind it or discuss that next month.
One thing. One thing on the cars, we were on a four-car rotation each year, or a thousand a year. And I really believe by the maintenance we have on the police cars now, by our, it is furthering the life of the cars. And we kind of come up with an agreement, we give it regards against seventy-five thousand mile on it, unless there's really good reason to move it. So, we're trying to, I know this delays, though we're saving money and we're buying, we need to buy.
Just one other thing you're interested in mentioning.
Sure.
I don't know if you want to have Ron come up.
Yes, yes.
Give us an update on Vandelia Road and Veterans Way.
Come on up, Ron.
Sure. Good evening. What Jamie was saying in the board of work meeting, I gave a brief report on the status of our road construction projects. I'll start with Vandelia Road and Decatur County Bridge Number One Eighty-Eight, sometimes known as Peanut Hill. That's the bridge at the eastern, sorry, the western end of Vandelia Road that we've been working on. Week ago yesterday, the new road along the north side of Idina King's Body Shop, starting at US Route Four Twenty-One and extending to the west, and actually all the way to County Route Two Fifty West, but the part that's being closed was to the bridge, was open to traffic, it is substantially complete, it's not a hundred percent complete yet. We still have, we have temporary pavement markings down. We need to complete the pavement markings and install the remaining traffic control signs. We do have adequate intersection control in place. The road project, starting at the highway and going just to the bridge, was a federally funded project, and the local share was paid through the Honda Redevelopment Commission. The bridge was a hundred percent locally funded project, and that was paid through the Honda Redevelopment Commission. The contractor continues to work on the connection of Liberty Circle Drive East. That intersection is closed, and the contractor has installed a drainage structure, and he's working on getting the pavement in. The old road along the south side of Idina King's Body Shop has had the pavement removed, and they need to put the topsoil in there and grade it out and sew it to grass, and when those things are all done, it will be complete. We do have to wait until the grass is to a point where IDEM will release the erosion control requirements to the project. So, that may run on into the fall, or conceivably could run on into the spring. But the road was, as I said, is open to traffic, and you can get through there now. Questions?
Just where the, along, where the old road matched up to Four Twenty-One previously, they come in an angle that will remove. There's curbing passed before and after that. When that's put back, are you going to put curbing in there?
Yes, sir, that's part of the project, is to extend that curb across there and extend the sidewalk across there, so that when we're done, I'd like to say it won't wipe my grooves over there, certainly it will, but, but the curb and the, and the sidewalk and all will be put back in place. Other questions? Vandelia Road Project continues. West of. I'm sorry, Veterans Way. West of Moscow Road is nearly complete. The, the street lights may not all be set yet, but that's pretty much what's left. And put the surface on the road to the west and finish the monument. And I guess finally finish the lift station. Lift station is pretty much in place, except for the actual pumps and the controls for the pumps, but the rest of it's there. East of Moscow Road, the water line work is complete, the sewer, the sanitary sewer line is complete. The storm sewer is nearly complete, there's a couple of storm drainage inlet structures to be set. But when that's done, it will be done. They are working this week on the stabilization of the subgrade. When that's done, I think next week, they're scheduled to start the paving operations. After the first pavement layer is put down and stone is put along the shoulders, they'll put the curbing in. And once the curbing is in place, they'll finish all of the paving except for the surface. And they will then have the street lights to get installed. Right now, it appears that that project will be substantially completed by the first week to the middle of October. And substantial completion in this term means having traffic on the road. There'll still be some, probably some grading work and some landscaping work to complete after that. But the road should be ready to go. Questions? Thank you, Ron. You're welcome. Thank you.
Information purposes, I don't think there's a reason for change or done in the past. So, as I said earlier, and Jamie didn't tell about it, which is favorite holiday that we've got, Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Halloween.
Halloween. Keep the hours the same as they have been in the past, five a.m. She's right here, she's picked out.
Council, do you have any questions? Is there anybody's?
So, people have asked me about this, and, and so the topic is chickens. And people have asked me about that, whether or not there would be, you know, the popular, becoming more popular for people to have a chicken or two in the backyard for eggs and so forth. And there was some discussion about whether that's permitted or not. Well, you know, it's interesting, because if you look at the ordinance.
He said no.
The ordinance?
He said no fowl.
Well, you know, let me finish. Let's just say no fowl. Actually, the ordinance says that, in only part of it, it says that it's, it prohibits chickens and other like animals, that's other things, from running at large. They are permitted on the premise of, contained on the premise of the property. Then later in the ordinance, it says that it prohibits to raise animals, and it talks about farm animals, and it says, or fowl, whereas the other one talked about chickens, ducks, and fowl and so forth, for sale or for profit. In farm animals, farm animals include fowl, could be kept, farm animals could be kept only on property zone that's farmed. We don't have farms for this reason, so it's kind of odd. My, my question is, I, there's a conflict here, because one part of the, one part of the ordinance clearly says that, indicates that they're permitted. Another says that certain animals are not permitted, including fowl. And fowl in the first part of the ordinance talks about that fowl is allowed to be running free if it's in the park. So, that would think that you're talking about fowl there in a different sense than just chickens. So, I don't know, I'm just saying that that's something that, I don't know whether we'd want to entertain that thought about allowing that, permitting that in terms of what people are thinking about doing and doing.
And I know there's people in town that have chickens.
I was saying, I thought I've seen some.
You know, my wife asked me, saying, are you allowed chickens in Greensburg? I said, I don't really think so, but I said, is someone complaining? I said, let, let it be.
Well, and my question came up because somebody told me that they were asked, and they were told they couldn't have. Ask somebody who's sitting, I don't know. And I didn't, for present to find out, it wasn't, but my, I just think that might be something we need to.
The pliant I got land wasn't a chickens, it was the rooster.
Well, I haven't gotten any of the pliant.
The daylight.
I haven't gotten any of the pliant. Richard, there's obviously, it clearly implies it's permitted.
You know I'm not going to let this go.
I mean, James, you have land.
So, you're saying if we allow chickens, we need to remove the fowl language from the ordinance?
Exactly.
So, so what, what you council want to do? You want to revisit this chicken thing?
I mean, I'm just bringing it to your attention to something all over. I didn't have to ask you to make a decision about it.
Now, I want you to watch the picture this way. I had some close by, I complained, and when I was setting off, this one, down there, and the guy had a pickup truck out front, and it had a rope tied to his back. truck out front, and had a rope tied to his back bumper, threw it up to the top of the lamp, so he could walk on it, right eye, and he had a hog tied by the roof hooks, then he was butchering that hog, we were talking sidewalk, but he had horse dung in the back of the car, and I asked him, don't do that again, people, these kids don't know what you're doing, I'm scared of some of these, and by the way, I got a complaint on the rooster throwing every morning, I really don't think it's supposed to have chickens in town, so that's where I come up, or maybe one issue there, and...
No, that, I, no, this was, this, this came up this summer from two random people having an affair, so...
And, and I understand that, there's people that have fresh hates every day, but, no, council just thinks, but, see what's good, and one more thing, public discussion, anybody in the audience have anything? Okay, then I'm gonna entertain a motion. If you're ready.